Welcome to An Honorable Profession, a podcast giving America hope since 2018. I'm Ryan Coonerty. Along with Debbie Cox-Bolton of the New Deal, I'm lucky enough to be your co-host. An honorable profession is a New Deal Leaders podcast. The New Deal is an organization that supports the next generation of American leaders. From attorneys generals to state senators to mayors to school board members, these are the people that are pushing policies and politics that will respond to climate change, rebuild our economy, address racial injustice, and restore our democracy. These are incredibly talented people who have dedicated themselves to public service when their country and their communities need it the most. Check out newdealleaders.org to see what I'm talking about. Today, I talk with my vice mayor and friend, Shebra Kalantari Johnson. We talk about how she's integrated health into all of Santa Cruz's policies, fought for our kids, and in doing so, took on some powerful enemies, escaped Iran after being threatened on a beach by morality police. And if that's not enough, she also tells us how she stays optimistic and in the fight even when times are tough. Listen, and I think you'll hear why I find Shebra to be such a wonderful person and an inspiring leader. Enjoy. Vice Mayor, my vice mayor, Shebra Kalantari Johnson, welcome to An Honorable Profession.
Wonderful to be here. Thanks for having me.
So I was mentioning that you and I live about three blocks away from each other, stone's throw, but we're, in order to facilitate all the video and everything else, we are virtual today, but I'm lucky enough to call you my representative on the Santa Cruz City Council. We've known each other for many years. I think it's, I think the place I want to start is this concept that you've brought to City Council of Health and All Policies and a focus on health, which is not a normal priority in city government, but has been a priority of yours. And so can you talk about those efforts over your term to integrate health into all of our policy decisions to Santa Cruz?
Yeah, sure. Well, I'm going to give just a little bit of my background because I think it's relevant in that I come from the social services and public health world. I have a master's in social work and really that work is what inspired me to run for office is to bring the lens of social services and public health into city governance. And as you mentioned, Ryan, you know, it's typically the county and the state that addresses public health, health issues, yet it touches every part of what we do. I mean, from trash pickup to our running water, to unhoused community members, to how we make decisions on housing. So Health and All Policies endorsed by the World Health Organization has been used across the world, but really most prominently here in the United States. It really centers three pillars, and that's health and wellbeing as one pillar, sustainability and equity. And so every policy decision, every budget decision, every program decision that we make at the city of Santa Cruz, we are to use those three pillars as our guides. So that's a little bit of the background.
Yeah. Can you give us some examples of maybe in non-traditional areas where health and all policy, trash pickup, housing, like things you wouldn't automatically assume with public health strategy?
Well, how about leaf blowers?
Yeah.
I'm serious. That's, that's an ordinance that we just passed this last year, and it came out of our Health and All Policies Committee. So you think, you know, health and all policies, equity, sustainability, health, and leaf blowers, yet it really does fit. We had a group of constituents, as is the case with a lot of policymaking. You have community members that are unhappy or see a gap or see something missing in the community. So we had community members come to some of us who serve on that committee and, you know, make the case that gas-powered leaf blowers provide greenhouse gas emissions and impact our climate. They impact our health and wellbeing in terms of what's ingested from the gas emissions, and they provide noise pollution. So it really, we use the lens of equity in terms of most folks who are using those gas-powered leaf blowers are from marginalized communities, working in the landscaping world. So it impacts their health inequitably. It impacts the climate in our community, and it impacts equity, health and equity for those landscapers. So that's one example of, of something that's, you would think, non-traditional, but a city responsibility that we were able to shape out of our Health and All Policies with an equity framework, right? So along with the policy, we're looking at how to help support landscapers in getting funding so that they can transition out their gas-powered leaf blowers for electric leaf blowers.
Love it. And now I want to shift to what was a major Health and All Policies fight, which is the sugar sweetened beverage tax that a little community like ours became sort of ground zero for battle over how you would, over whether you should tax sugar sweetened beverages and the impact that can have on a community's health and particularly kids' health. Can you talk a little bit about both the policy and the fight that ensued?
I'm so glad you asked about that. Yeah, you know, like I said, the, the public health and social services world is what sort of shaped me and inspired me to come into this world. And believe it or not, this conversation has been in our community for at least two decades. I first came into this as a policy solution to really some major health disparities that we have here in Santa Cruz County, throughout California, throughout the United States around obesity and specifically childhood obesity and dental cavities among certain population groups. So I came into this policy 20 years ago when I was a community organizer with our local United Way of Santa Cruz County, and we were addressing real disproportionate high rates of childhood obesity in our community. So that's a little bit of that background. Here we are 20 years later. My colleague, former council member, former mayor, Martine Watkins, first brought it to the City Council in 2017, 2018, I believe. And I don't know how much detail you want me to go into. I'll, I'll give, I'll give high level. We passed an ordinance at the city. We were gonna put it, we, excuse me, we passed, the City Council passed to put it on the ballot for the voters to vote on because it's a tax, so the voters need to vote on it. And we were stopped short and had to pull it from our ballot because the beverage industry essentially lobbied the governor and they passed the Keep Groceries Affordable Act, really specifically so that cities would not pass soda taxes. That's the background. We fought that, and in 2023, we won a part of that lawsuit, meaning that charter cities are allowed to pursue these taxes without being penalized. So that's the background. So once we had that lawsuit, once we prevailed in that lawsuit, myself and two of my colleagues, again, the work came out of Health and All Policies, and three of us serve out of, in Health and All Policies, brought this forward, did a year of work to see if there's still community will and community readiness to tax ourselves on soda beverages. And we saw that there was. And after a year of talking to different businesses and doing polling, we decided to bring it to the City Council and ultimately put it on this past November ballot. So the policy itself is a two cent per ounce tax on sugar sweetened beverages, predominantly soda, but there are other drinks that are defined as sugar sweetened beverages. So estimated to generate 1.3 million. We passed it as a general tax. However, we have in place a format that's been successful in other communities such as Berkeley and San Francisco, where we have an accountability body that will recommend how these dollars are spent. That, and the, and the, the purpose and intention is for us to then reinvest in programs and services that improve our community health and wellbeing.
And so you put it on the ballot, and we, you know, we're, we're a relatively small to medium-sized city, but the Beverage Association decided that it wanted to defeat it here, not just because they wanted to beat it here, but to send a message to all small and medium-sized cities, maybe even some big cities, that if you do this, it'll be a hard fight and you'll lose. So tell us what happened in the, in the campaign.
Oh, my gosh, where do I start, Ryan? You know what? I'll start with, with a canvasser at my door. I'll share the personal story. Just very early on in the campaign, someone knocks on my door, my son, my teenage son answers and says, oh, we're not interested, you know, and starts to shut the door. And I'm like, oh, hold on, hold on, hold on, like listening from the kitchen as I'm cooking dinner. And it's someone who is opposed to the sugar and sweet beverage tax, and they're, and it's a young man, I don't know, early twenties. And so, hey, tell me a little bit about this. He has no idea whose door he's knocked on, right? Tell me a little bit about this. So he gives me the flyer. He's like, well, this, they're, they're trying to tax sodas, and it's really not good. And he's really kind of stumbling over his words. And I say, okay, well, let me just disclose, I'm actually working on this in support of the tax. I really want to hear from you, though, why you think this isn't good. Like, tell me your reasons. And he says, well, to be honest, I just, this is my first day on the job. I don't really know much about it. Oh, okay. All right. People pay canvassers. So, okay, you're getting paid to canvas. Well, you know, let me tell you, the, the opponent's side, like, let me tell you why we think this is important. So I share it with him, and he's listening intently, and he says, wow, those are some really good points. And what you're sharing is really much more aligned with my values and where I would be, but I like, I just need a paycheck. I get it, you know, and if we do enough fundraising, maybe we can help pay canvassers as well. Here's my card. Whereabouts do you live? I'm wondering if I'm your representative, if you live in my district. He says, well, you know, I took the bus from such and such city, like a city of like two, three hours away. So that was sort of my first, like, real life experience with what the industry, how the industry was approaching this, you know, paying out-of-town canvassers. They spent just shy of $2 million against our $80,000 that we were able to fundraise for. And I kid you not, I mean, you got, you got the mail, Ryan, at least one mailer a week for the last six, seven, eight weeks of the, of the campaign. And we prevailed. We won, I think, by 53% of the votes. So.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, just to give the listeners context, we're a city of little less than 60,000 people, spending $2 million on that few voters. There was TV, there was radio, there was internet, social media, mailers. We were all inundated, and it was this enormous difference in spending between the two campaigns, yet, yet the Health and All Policies and the proponents won. And now you're heading into probably litigation as.
That's up to the industry. They don't have to sue us.
Right.
Within our rights as a charter city to generate, to invest in health. So that's up to them.
There we go. All right. So I'm going to come back to, to the various policy proposals, but you have an, an incredible life story that has shaped your willingness to serve in your community. Can you tell us how you ended up in Santa Cruz by way of Iran?
Sure. Yeah. I'm going to start with a story that I know you've heard, Ryan, but I don't think our listeners have. And that is a story, so I'm from Iran. I'm from the north of Iran in a province called Mazandaran, in a small town called Saudi, which is about the same size as Santa Cruz, actually, coastal town. I wonder why I ended up here. Reminds me of my birth home. So I'm going to share a memory, and it's relevant to your question. My memory is me as a five-year-old in, at the beach with my dad and, you know, by our hometown. And I'm with my uncle and my cousin, and this is, so I'm five years old, this is 1982, just after the Islamic Revolution. And a morality police with his big beard and big gun comes up to my dad and, and points the gun to my dad and says, you are unfit to be a father. And you're unfit to be a father because your five-year-old daughter is wearing a bathing suit, a bikini, cute little bikini that I still have to this day. And I remember at that age thinking, well, how come my uncle's not unfit to be a father when my male cousin has less on than I do? And so, you know, you think about these moments that really shape who you are and that shape your values. I didn't know the word equity at the age of five. I didn't know that word until much later, but I knew that what was happening was unfair. And that was a real pivotal moment for my family. I mean, things, there were a lot of things that led up to my family deciding to leave Iran post-revolution. But in talking to my parents afterwards, I thought I'd made that memory up. They said, no, that's very real. And that was a real, real significant moment for our family. My dad, you know, finally was like, I can't do this. I've got two daughters and they need a better opportunity than what our country can provide. So that was the start of a long journey. By way of Turkey and Germany and a year in transit, we made it to Sacramento, California. And there was a very tight, insular community of Iranians there. I was the babysitter at the age of eight, by the way, of all of the like cousins and neighbors while my parents went out and worked and tried to make it as new immigrants. So that all really shaped my, you know, deep desire to serve the community, to build strong communities, because communities can, can be resilient and can stand up for what's right and, and help each other if we're able to create the conditions for them to be a strong community. So that was the start of my journey. Fast forward, I became a slug. Fast forward.
Last slug, meaning UCSC fighting banana slug.
That's, we are the banana slugs. Yeah. That's how I ended up at Santa Cruz, you know, came here. Like I said, it reminded me of my birth town, my hometown in Iran, and I attended the university here. And then another big moment for me was after I graduated, I moved to San Francisco, and I worked in the San Francisco's Tenderloin. And for those of you who aren't familiar with San Francisco or California, it's, it's a, it's a place where a lot of unhoused individuals live, and it's, it's a district in San Francisco. There's a lot of poverty, a lot of drug use. So I worked with unhoused, formerly unhoused population living in, in supportive housing. And, and Governor Newsom was then mayor. And I remember thinking, there's only so much I can do in an office. I mean, and that, that work is important, right? Like the therapy work and the case management work. There's only so much I, as an individual, can do from, in that one-on-one work. I really want to look at systems. I really want to look at policies. And I really want to see, again, how do we create conditions for people to be able to end up in a better place? So that was a long response to your question about.
No, I mean, it's so important and fascinating. I mean, and I guess I'd love your perspective now. We're less than two weeks into the Trump administration. We are seeing a, a persistent attack on ideas of equity and inclusion and welcoming people from, from war-torn and terrible places, places that are experiencing terrible tragedies and wars and everything else. How, how do you see your role in leadership based on your history and your values in these, in these difficult times?
Yeah. I mean, I do bring that lived experience that is, is unique. I lived it. And, you know, equity, I think the way that this administration's trying to frame it is that it's this, it's this woke, elite, sort of actually exclusive idea. And it's really not, everybody gets fairness. You know, you put two kids in a room and you give one five M&Ms, and you give one, two M&Ms, like, they'll be hearing from you. So, so I think, I think we all understand these concepts and these values, and some of us, including myself, have experienced them at, at different scales. So really fleeing a war-torn country and, and being a refugee and being an immigrant for, being a refugee for a year, and then, and then an immigrant still, I am an immigrant, I will be forever. You have pretty specific experiences, right? So just to get it very, very granular and specific, we are, the city of Santa Cruz is a sanctuary city. And there's a lot of concerns. Community members have come forward and asked, but what does that actually mean? So as we speak, I'm working with some council members on what it would mean to reaffirm our status as a sanctuary city. And then what does that actually mean? What does it look like when ICE comes? Or what does it look like when they, you know, when they want to work with our law enforcement, or they knock on classroom doors? What does that look like? What do we have in place? So I'm, as we speak, in the process of working on that, bringing that forward to the council.
Wow. And can you talk a little bit, I mean, there are not many Iranian-American elected officials around the country. And so in your campaigns, you've tapped into, you know, the broader community outside of our, our community. And what does it mean to be an Iranian-American vice mayor of the city of Santa Cruz?
Well, I got to tell you, so I got, I first was elected for, in 2020, four years ago. And so it was all, everything was on Zoom, including my swearing in. And then I was re-elected. I won the primary of my election in March of 2024, so I'm serving another four years. And so my parents came to my swearing in, and I got to tell you, it's, it was really wonderful and amazing to see their faces, to see my dad's face, because this would never happen in Iran. A woman, to be in, in, to give a woman the ability to serve her community in this way would not happen in current-day Iran. And so he had tears in his eyes, and he was really proud. And I think that, that's, that's the sentiment I get from the larger Iranian community, that, that we, this generation, my generation and others younger than me, have the opportunity to do things and serve our country. This is our country now, the United States. I am Iranian-American. And, and I, and I know that those of my, those in my, the Iranian-American community see that as well. We are now able to serve this country, serve our new country in a way that we could never serve our birth country. So there's a lot of pride. There's a lot of just, I think, also gratitude to be able to serve in this way. I had the opportunity to attend the White House for an invite only of elected Iranian-American elected officials to a Persian New Year event two years ago. And that was really quite amazing and really special to, to have our then-President Biden and Vice President Kamala Harris stand in a room and acknowledge the thousand-year-old tradition that we have. The Persian New Year is the first day of spring, so you celebrate rebirth and renewal and spring, what spring's all about. And so to be amongst maybe, you know, 200 other elected Iranian-American elected officials across the country and, and have our president honor, that was really special.
That's amazing. You are a professional grant writer, a mom to two teenage sons, and the vice mayor of Santa Cruz. Can you talk a little bit about, like, what your day is like? What has, what's been surprising to you about being an elected official? What, what do you see as the positives and the negatives of the, of the life that you are navigating as we speak?
Well, I gotta say, folks like yourself, Ryan, I'm just, I'm going to out you, and such an inspiration and a support. There's no way to do this without that. I'm really fortunate to have someone like you and other colleagues who I can bounce ideas off of and just be, just be myself and, and be vulnerable and silly and serious and all of it. So I think that's really key. My family has been incredible. My husband's maybe a little sick of all the campaigning. I will say, I had four campaigns in three and a half years. And I'll share, for, for those who don't know, I, so I ran for council in 2020, and then I ran for supervisor, for county supervisor, and really essentially ran two elections for that because I had the primary, and then I had the runoff general election. And then I ran again for a second term. So four campaigns in three and a half years was not fun. That's, and probably a lot of elected officials and yourself would agree that campaigning can be really, really pretty grueling and a lot of hours, and it takes you away from your family. And so that, that wasn't fun. But what is fun is getting to know constituents and hearing from community members directly. I mean, some people think, really, this is the part you like, but I loved and love knocking on doors. I love hearing people share, you know, mostly people share what they are unhappy about. But often, they do it in a way that's like, you can see the commitment. You can see the commitment behind their complaint. They're complaining because they're committed to their community, and they want their community to be better. And often, they have ideas. So that's the part that I really find joy in, in serving, whether it's knocking on doors as I'm campaigning, or when I'm office and people reach out to me and they want to meet me for coffee and share whatever it is they want to share.
Amazing. And so how do you decide what's next, what you focus on? There's, there's, you can be pulled in a million different directions. And right now, everyone in local government and state government is being pulled into the chaos of the federal government. So as you think about the year ahead, what policies are you focused on? And then also, how do you decide what policies to focus on?
Yeah, those are great questions. I sometimes feel like a kid in a candy store. I want to do all of it, and I want to do it all right away. Of course, then you're not going to be successful in anything. I mean, you know, my, my, my public health and social work background and lens really helps, helps me kind of land on what I should prioritize. Also, just hearing from the community. Sometimes there are issues that come up that there's just a small group of loud people, and that's not really the dominant issue in the community. But hearing from the community, that, of course, helps me prioritize. But frankly, it's, it's issues that will improve our community wellbeing. I know that's really broad. But for me, that lands in housing and homelessness, that lands in investing in children and youth. And I can share more specifics of how I have done that and how I continue, I'm planning on continuing to do that. Looking at our downtown area, for example, like, what does it mean to, to have our community members really use the space, really activate downtown? So community wellbeing translates in a lot of ways. So that's kind of what I use to help me prioritize.
Tell us about the investments in children and youth and, and the focus that this council in particular has had over the past five or six years.
Yeah, sure. So we have, we're one of the few, I think, in the entire country for a city jurisdiction to have passed a voter-approved children's fund. So we had a council policy, my, my colleague, Martine Watkins, brought this forward when she was mayor, council policy to invest some of our cannabis tax revenue, our cannabis is legal here in the state of California, so some of our cannabis tax revenue to go into a dedicated fund to reinvest in children and youth. That was 12% of the revenue. We then took it to the voters in 2021, I believe. And I worked on that initiative, and we increased it to 20%. So 20% of all our cannabis sales tax revenue goes to a dedicated fund, and then we reinvest that into programs for children and families. So last year, we were able to give out 700, upwards of $700,000 to local organizations and programs to, again, reinvest in children and families. So that's, that's an initiative that we have. The other one that I helped pioneer and bring forward is we have passed the Children and Youth Bill of Rights. Again, not typically a city, cities don't often do this. It's often the, the county board of supervisors because they have more of the child welfare departments. But we were able to bring forward the Children Youth Bill of Rights, and we have some specific action items with, underneath that. And, and one, one specifically is that we bring forward youth liaisons. So we currently have four youth liaisons. They help, they work with a council member, and then they work with various committees and commissions, and they help sort of shape our policy decisions. And then they also work with us to bring forward a youth wellbeing, state of the youth wellbeing report that we do every other year. So that's another one. And then, and then I will just say, you know, the sugar sweetened beverage tax that we talked about earlier, you know, the hope and idea is that some of that investment will be invested into children, youth wellbeing, programs and services.
Amazing. And, you know, that has generational impacts. But my last question is, you know, we are, we're miles away, but, but we've, from the LA fires, but we've experienced massive fires in our community, floods, title surges, part of the wharf was just ripped off by large waves. And then we have housing crisis, and now we have all the challenges of the, and chaos of the Trump administration. Yet you remain one of the most committed and optimistic public servants, I know. Where does that optimism come from? And what's your advice to people who are like, I give up? Like, it's just, like, this is, there's too many last straws on the haystack. I can't, I just cannot engage anymore. I feel as many of, as many people pull back, I watch you run in. And so what is that? Where's that come from? And what's your advice to people who are maybe feeling a little overwhelmed and scared right now?
Well, I mean, I think where it comes from is, you know, you experience adversity and you overcome adversity. Every single one of us has experienced some level of adversity, you know, whether it's a morality police sticking a gun in your father's face, or whether it's, whatever it is, right? Every single one of us has experienced adversity. So I think for me, the, the hope and courage comes from knowing that I have overcome, that we have overcome, that our community has overcome, that our that we have overcome, that our community has overcome, that our country has overcome. Like just resting assured in that, in that history that we have that we've done it and we can do it. I think that for me, that's where that comes from. And I think, you know, what's a tangible something that you could just wrap your hands around? It can be at your kid's school. It can be in your own home. It could be like making a lovely soup once a week. I mean, what is something tangible that gives you joy? That will make a difference, right? That, I mean, I'm saying soup and that might sound silly, but that's going to nurture someone. So I think, I think that's the advice I would give is, is standing in who you are, knowing that you as an individual, you as your community have overcome past challenges, again, whatever scale and degree that is. And finding one thing that you want to contribute to. Because I think, you know, I know that leadership has many entry points. And leadership doesn't need to have a title. You don't need to be Vice Mayor or Supervisor or President for that matter to show that you're a leader. All you need to do is know who you are and show up.
I love that. That is good advice. Easier said than done. Knowing who you are and showing up is not always easy, but it's, it's never been more critical. Thank you for being my Vice Mayor. Thank you for being a New Deal leader. And we are thrilled to have you in the network and hopefully other communities can, can look at their health and all policies, can look at how to support their kids and your impact will spread from, from this community to beyond.
Thank you so much. Real honor to talk to you, Ryan.
An honorable profession is a New Deal Leaders podcast. Thanks to the team at New Deal for producing this episode. We encourage you to bring honor to public service and because we keep things honorable, no tax dollars are used in the making of this podcast.
This podcast is part of the Democracy Group.